Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. We have a special guest here today that I'd like to introduce. His name is Manuel Griffin, Jr. He's a lifelong member of the Disabled Veterans Association, Chapter 11 in Dixon City, and is currently Sergeant-at-Arms for the Archibald 869 American Legion. He served nine years from 1990 to 1999 as an E-Force Specialist with military, police, and the United States Army. He currently lives in Scranton, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegion. So if everybody would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, thanks, everybody. We're pleased to be in Clark Summit this afternoon, this morning. We're taking our Commissioner meetings on the road for the summer. I just want to acknowledge, I don't think there's any borough officials here today unless I'm missing somebody, but I just want to acknowledge the Mayor of Clark Summit, Harry Kelly, the Council President, Jerry Carey, Council Vice President, Josh Mitchell, Councilman Jean Hallinan, Councilman Bob Shields, Councilman Steve Guza, and Councilwoman Ronnie Lopez, and the Borough Manager, Jennifer Basaliga. So I just want to thank them for all the great work they do up here in Clark Summit. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioner's meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to discuss anything that's on the agenda? Okay. Okay, we'll move into the resolutions. First up is Resolution 25-0140.
This is approving the recurrent payables, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 386149-386842, inclusive, totaling $1,782,255. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,927,643.16. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0128.
This is approving an amendment to the prison commissary agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby enter into an amendment with Keefe Commissary Network, LLC, for the Lackawanna County Prison, after receiving the recommendation of the prison board. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that or answer any of your questions is the Warden of Lackawanna County Prison, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This agreement is an amendment to the already signed contract between Keefe and Lackawanna County, and the end result of it would be that they would not be providing the Keefe's Access Correction Secure Payment Services, essentially being the bank for the prison. They wouldn't be providing that function since we already have a vendor doing that. And also, as a result of that, they would lower their commission payment to the county inmate canteen account from 33.1% to 26%.
Any questions for Warden Betty? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much.
Did you hear these people, that there's no placards put up there?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I should have did that. Usually, we have the placard. So all the way down to the left is Gary DeBilio. He is the county comptroller. Next to him is Don Frederickson. He's the county solicitor. Tracy Hart is the Deputy Chief of Staff. Brian Jeffers is the Chief of Staff. I'm Bill Gahin, County Commissioner. Chris Schirmack, County Commissioner, and the minority solicitor. Chris Schirmack's solicitor is PJ LeVale. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. Next up is Resolution 25-0129.
This is entering into an intergovernmental agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Susquehanna to house Susquehanna County inmates and prisoners at the Lackawanna County Prison at a cost of $118 per day, least inmate space. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, also to speak upon that is the Warden, Mr. Tim Betty.
Good morning again. This intergovernmental agreement will allow for Lackawanna County to house some Susquehanna County inmates, detainees, sentenced offenders. I just want you, the Commissioners and the public, to know that we do have essentially a right of refusal for individuals, in case there's any really complicated case or anything along those lines. As Chief of Staff Jeffers mentioned, the agreement is for $118 a day per individual. There are expenses, medical expenses, out of the ordinary medical expenses, that will also be covered by Susquehanna County. So a lot of it is at no cost at all to Lackawanna County.
And the reason they asked is they've closed their prison off in Susquehanna County.
And as you just stated, if there comes a time, for whatever reason, that we would get an influx, we can stop that if it has any negative effect on the operations of the prison or on the expenditures of the prison, like overtime and things like that, correct?
Yes, and I've already done an analysis based on what they were housing as a population. It wouldn't result in any additional need for staff, any additional staff at our facility, because we're talking about 2025 individuals at most.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Warden Betty? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0130.
This is entering into a co-promotion agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a co-promotion agreement with Odyssey Pennsylvania, LLC, and Scranton tomorrow for the Scrantastic Spectacular on Courthouse Square, July 3, 2025. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Arts and Culture, Ms. Marie McWigan.
Good morning, everybody. So this event is less than a month away, and we have a partner on this that helps us do the festival during the concert and fireworks, Odyssey. So we've been doing this for years. We just have to sign a co-partnership agreement with them outlining the duties.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Director McWigan? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0131.
Entering into an artist agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an artist agreement with Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic for a concert on Thursday, July 3, 2025, as part of the 2025 Scrantastic Spectacular. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 3, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McWigan.
So we have some great news this year. After COVID, we weren't able to have the full orchestra for a few reasons, but now we are bringing them back in the full glory. There's nothing like seeing a live orchestra. This is funded through the Arts and Culture Budget, but I'm happy to report, we also have additional community support, and we're going to have a big stage so people can see better. So I think it's going to be a really great experience, and we just encourage everyone to come out and celebrate America with us.
And the executive director of the Philharmonic has been phenomenal to deal with, and this year, the conductor, I think, is going to be someone from the United States military, which is pretty cool.
Yeah, I believe that's true. Yeah, I really want to give a shout out to Jason. He's pretty new, but he's hit the ground running and has made this happen. And I should mention, we also, for the first time, have a rain location, so hopefully it'll be a beautiful day like this. But it will be at Scranton High, and then the fireworks will be on July 5, if we have to reschedule.
Great job. Any questions for Director McWigan? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0132.
This is entering into an agreement with Community Development Properties, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Community Development Properties, Scranton Parking Authority, the Car Parks, Scranton Tomorrow, and Zembelli Fireworks, to allow Zembelli Fireworks to use the rooftop of the Linden Street Garage located at 305 North Washington Avenue on Thursday, July 3, 2025. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director McWigan.
It is a great fireworks display, and it's beautiful in the downtown, so we are allowed to shoot them off the parking garage, but there's various people who run the parking garage, so this is just a standard agreement to allow us to do that. So again, come down, it's a 20-minute show, so.
Does it follow through the 5th, the case of the rain date?
Yeah, they'll be back on the 5th, so.
But the contract with the garage?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have right in there that says whatever rain date we decide.
But you're in charge of the weather, so we're.
I wish I could get a sponsorship for the weather, $100,000, hopefully.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0133.
Entering into a commercial lease agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is enter into a commercial lease agreement with Steamtown 300 LLC Marketplace of Steamtown at a cost of $37 per month to begin August 1, 2025, and end October 31, 2025, with an option to extend. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Commissioners, as everyone is aware, we are going through reassessment for the first time in 57 years.
Really?
Because of that, the Commissioners have put forth four auxiliary boards to go with our permanent board that we have of appeals, and they need space to hear all the hearings that will be going on. So the hearings will start, I think it's August 2nd they actually start, but at least it'll start August 1st, and it'll end on Halloween. If we need extended more time, they can extend us more time. They will be able to, all five of these appeals boards will be able to be in the space separated so that individuals can have their formal hearings.
Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to say it'll give them convenient parking.
There's work in there, yes.
Get validated.
We scouted a bunch of locations, and this is actually the best one.
Okay, very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0134.
This is approving aging amendments, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging's Contract Amendments with the Dummore Senior Center and the United Neighborhood Centers for Fiscal Year '25 through '26. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning. Senior activities are offered at all of our senior community centers throughout Lackawanna County, and they target older adults by offering programs for exercise, or education, self-care, or nutrition. These amendments are budget neutral and will redirect funding initially provided directly to six individual providers, directly to the senior community centers managed by United Neighborhood Centers, serving Abington, Scranton, Mid Valley, Carbondale, and the Dummore Senior Community Center. This will allow for more efficiency and flexibility in providing a wide range of activities and allow the centers to fill in schedule gaps in a timely manner. The amount of funding reallocated, the total amount of funding, is going to be $54,200. And the individuals who were previously served under our Lackawanna County contracts will continue to serve through the United Neighborhood Centers and Dummore.
Great. Any questions for Director McDonald? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0135.
This is entering into a cooperative agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a cooperative agreement for legal services with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services and the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. Agreement to commence May 1, 2025, and expire September 30, 2025. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Lackawanna County's Director of Domestic Relations, Ms. Kathy Anne Hardaway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to ask for somewhat of an amended agreement with Joseph Healy Esquire. Domestic relations is required to have what we call a title for the attorney, for services for custodial parents to level the playground. Maybe when the non-custodial parent has legal representation, we would want, on the behalf of the children, for the custodial parent also have legal representation. Attorney Healy has changed law firms. The prior agreement was with his former law firm, Burns White LLC. Now the agreement will be directly with Joseph Healy Esquire. That is the only change in the agreement, with some dates in mind. The agreement will end as the last agreement, September 30, 2025.
Great. Any questions for Director Hardaway? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0136.
So we're in the environmental consultant community-wide brownfield assessment, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the environmental consultant community-wide brownfield assessment to AMO Environmental Decisions, 875 Northeastern Road, Doylestown, Pennsylvania, 18518902, to implement Lackawanna County's United States Environmental Protection Agency Countywide Brownfields Assessment Grant. Consultants shall complete all work under this contract, no later than September 30, 2028. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Krista Magnotta.
Good morning, thank you.
Thank you.
This legislation engages a professional services contract for an environmental consultant to perform environmental Phase 1 and Phase 2 assessments for areas of concern throughout Lackawanna County that may be poised or wish to enter redevelopment. This provides us land opportunities for projects. We received three proposals with AMO Environmental Decisions to be the awarded professional contract, and this is all being paid for with a U.S. EPA grant for $500,000 for a three-year contract.
Very good. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, on the question, I just want to comment on this, that this legislation is going to allow us to identify and address environmental concerns throughout the county responsibly, paving the way, as Director Magnotta said, for redevelopment, economic growth, and really safer and healthier communities. With the support of these funds, we're transforming blight into opportunity, and we're protecting our environment while opening the doors for new investment across the county. So we're very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0137.
This is authorizing community development block grant modifications and revisions, be it resolved. At the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized the submissions of modifications and revisions of the community development block grant program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for federal fiscal years 2021, 2022, and 2023. Number 1, Clark Summit Bureau, federal fiscal year 2021. The housing rehabilitation allocation of $86,415 will be reallocated to the public community's facilities for Lakeside Pavilion senior and handicap improvements, receiving a revised allocation of $72,636. Number 2, Clark Summit Bureau, federal fiscal year 2022. The housing rehabilitation program allocation will be reduced from $87,613 to $81,712, and $5,901 will be reallocated to the Lakeside Pavilion senior handicap improvements for public community facilities. Number 3, Jessup Boroughs, federal fiscal year 2023. The allocation for the first-time homebuyers program in the amount of $82,279 will be reduced by $40,678 and reallocated to public community facilities for upgrades at the Sarah Braddy Park, with a total revised allocation of $40,678. Be further resolved, the county has complied with the terms of the Pennsylvania Act 179 and has met all citizen participation requirements in connection with the above-mentioned modifications. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Krista Magnotta.
Thank you. As was stated, authorizing modifications and revisions for the CDBG funds for both Clark Summit in 2021 and 2022, and Jessup in 2023, to be reallocated to alternative projects. These projects are timely because the due date for them is February 20 of 2026, and with these projects, we lose winter months if any of them have to do with any paving or any construction outside. So we want to make sure that these projects are authorized, and this, as always, the CDBG program, there's no cost to the county.
Any questions for Director Magnotta? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0138.
This is approving Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and the Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes, the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants, for $5,000 each, as per attached. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is Director Magnotta.
Thank you again. Selecting awardees for the Community Reinvest Programs, first round of funding of 2025, is what we are here for. Applications were accepted from January 1 through April 30. We selected 20 of 28 applicants. The other eight applicants that were not chosen can always go in for the second round, which is open as we speak, and those awards are made in December. This is a reimbursement award with a one-to-one match, up to $5,000. The total program for two different award times throughout the year is a $200,000 program, so 20 individuals or organizations are chosen in the first round with $100,000, and a second 20 individuals or organizations are chosen with $100,000 in the second part of the year. An individual or, and/or, I should say, organization can apply twice in a year, but cannot receive the award twice in a year, but they can receive it yearly. This helps VFWs, American Legions, nonprofits, little leagues, volunteer fire companies, municipalities, just to name a few. So we ask for approval of these 20 great projects.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? Just a comment. So two of the projects are in the Abington area, Clark Summit area. The first one is for the borough, excuse me, the borough of Clark Summit, for crosswalk safety initiatives and the addition of pedestrian safety lighting. And the second one is for the Abington Junior Comets Football Club for concession equipment and uniform upgrades. So it's a small amount of money, but for a lot of these programs, it's a very large amount of money because it helps them finish their projects. So thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Resolution 25-0139.
This is authorizing a signatory for roads and bridges, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized the Director of Roads and Bridges to sign and execute documents that are required in an ordinary course of business for Lackawanna County. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, and Mr. Schirmack, Director Layer, Lou Kosik is here for you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is basically just to make the signature paper that we have on file now more current. We have one that allows me to sign for most general permits for DEP when replacing a bridge, but because this one's going over the Little Lehigh River on Plank Road, it's considered a navigable waterway, so they're looking for an updated signature sheet, giving me authority to sign. That's basically all it is.
That's great. Any questions for Director Lukasik? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Resolution 25-0141.
Here's your appointments to the Conservation District Board, be it resolved. At the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Dr. Jay Kleimer of Clark Summit, it's a four-year term, effective immediately, and to expire December 31, 2028. Mr. Tom Maluski of Lake Ariel, it's a four-year term, effective immediately, and to expire December 31, 2028. Mr. Louis Paragam from Scott Township, it's a four-year term, effective immediately, and to expire December 31, 2028. Be further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Conservation District Board. Commissioner Chris Schirmack, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, it's a one-year term, effective immediately, and to expire June 30, 2026. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0142.
Here's your appointments to the Health and Welfare Authority, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby make the following reappointment to the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Ronnie Lopez of Clark Summit, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2029. Be further resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Health and Welfare Authority. Mary Lou Grogan of Scranton, to fill an unexpired term, effective immediately, and to expire December 31, 2025. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0143.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority. William F. King of Scranton, term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2030. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0144.
This is an appointment to the Lackawanna County Auxiliary Assessment Board, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Auxiliary Board Assessment Appeals with a term to begin immediately and expire December 31, 2025, as an alternate. Mr. Robert Weber of Scranton, Pennsylvania, to fill the unexpired term. Dennis Mezoroli. Adopted a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on June 4, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay, now's the opportunity for the public to address the board. You will have, excuse me, you'll have five minutes to address the board, and you'll be keeping the time, right? Okay.
Ding ding ding.
Right. So if anyone would like to address the board, now's the time.
Bob Olus, Scranton. My one concern here is about, are we gonna get hit with a rain tax with this whole new project going on for the storm management? Or is there gonna be legislation put out eliminating any rain tax?
So that has absolutely nothing to do with the rain tax. All that is, is the county is required, under Act, and I can't remember the exact number, to update its stormwater management plan, and hasn't updated it since 1992. So, and it's very, very expensive, so in order to do that, if you get all the municipalities to sign onto it, then you get grant funding, so that's what the county's trying to do. It has nothing to do with the rain tax.
As long as it's not coming out of our pocket, I could care less. The other issues I have are, I was at Scranton City Council last night, and it's upsetting to see a queer flag flying over City Hall instead of an ICE flag, or the Ukraine flag, or the Israeli flag that I donate about to the county and the city. Yet, we're being insulted. As a Catholic, to me, it's an insult. Rule of God takes place. And I would ask that the commissioners ask Cognetti to take down that flag. And more importantly, instead of honoring this group for a whole month, we should honor those that gave us the right under that flag there and call it Veterans Month and honor our fellow veterans that gave everything, those that gave it all, those that came home, but those that gave us the freedom to be sitting here today. That queer group did not give us that, and I don't see any reason why they should be honored for a whole month in our city or in our county. Respect is earned, not demanded. They're demanding respect. They haven't earned it, not like our fellow veterans have. And I ask that a letter be sent to Cognetti to remove that flag, put up an ICE flag, one that's meaningful, that's gonna help this county correct the issues we have, the drugs, the illegal immigrants, everything else that's going on here, and clean up our county, clean up our cities by getting rid of the scum that doesn't belong here and support ICE. Not worry about worrying about a queer organization unless they're gonna go ahead and participate in cleaning up our county. I don't see that anywhere. And to watch this going on, our city, our county has an opportunity to grow and continue to grow, but we're not doing nothing to support our law enforcement to get rid of the illegals. You have people bitching about, oh, we don't wanna see ICE here. Yeah, we do. We wanna see them there, and we wanna send a message through our state police, our agencies. Don't come here. You're not welcome. If you do, we're gonna get rid of you. And that's what we need to do, and we're not doing that. And that's the message we need. We need to put our money where our mouth is this time and support our law enforcement, that there's no doubt in your mind, don't come around here because we're gonna get you, and we're gonna get rid of you, we're gonna put you on a plane, a bus, and send you back. And as far as the senators and those idiots that have been going to El Salvador to bring a criminal back into our country, I filed a federal lawsuit already and asked me for an injunction to prevent any of them from going over there on our taxpayer dollar to bring these scum back to our country. That's where our voice has gotta be, and it's gotta be the voice of the people now that changes things around. And just watch what's going on and see how many people we've eliminated out of Lackawanna County, or the city, or other counties that were illegal aliens because we're not supporting our enforcement and ICE to do their job. And lastly, Mr. Goahan, I have a litigation against you, and I wanna set the record clear with your attorney. I sued you individually, not as a commissioner, for using our taxpayer dollars for your legal litigation expenses. And we have that hearing coming on up, and I wanna make that very clear, that you're not going under the umbrella of you're a commissioner and you can't be sued or pay the money back. I didn't sue you as a commissioner, I sued you as an individual, and we expect you to start paying your own bills. Now use our money for your personal gain. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? Yep?
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Wind, I'm the Executive Director of the Abington Community Library. I just had a quick announcement about our summer reading program. Our summer reading program begins June 30th and runs through August 8th. We have programming for all ages, and I like to quote our Lackawanna County Library System Head, Sandy Longo, who used to be in my spot until last year. She says we provide programming from the cradle to the grave. So please stop by the library this summer, if you haven't been in a long time, I welcome you back, and that's all I have to say today.
I compliment again the elevator, but just for the public, I have my children in the children's library downtown in downtown Scranton, and the staff there does a wonderful job, and it really is one of the great treasures that we have in Lackawanna County, and I think we have one of the best library systems in the state. You guys do a really good job, so thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Dave Maher from Clark Summit. I was hoping to get an update on the reassessment at this meeting. I see nothing on the agenda. I don't think there's any Tyler people here. My first question is, why isn't there any Tyler people here? I mean, it's a hot topic, and always a lot of questions going on. At least a progress report on what's happening, I don't know if anybody can give us a rundown on what's happening currently?
So, files online. So they-
All the status reports are online.
Yeah, they issue status reports, I think, monthly, right?
Weekly.
Or weekly, that they put online, that tells you everything-
On the Tyler side?
Yeah, on the Tyler side, that tells you kind of everything that they've been doing.
Okay. I know they were at the last meeting I was at to answer questions, so I was surprised that they weren't here either today.
So, we have some, sort of some dates that I have here in front of me. So dates to appeal, it was from April 1st to July 1st. For the reassessment year of 2026. Dates to appeal for Clean and Green, or, yeah, Clean and Green is 6/20 to August 1st, and, no, I think that goes till October 15th, Clean and Green. On top of that, if there's, now, I held a town hall a few weeks ago at Lackawanna College, just-
How's that?
That was, I don't know if you were at that?
Yeah.
Oh, so I'm gonna do that again at Abington Heights High School, the 30th, 5:30, same format, just with some attorneys and appraisers to do the same thing, answer questions, answer questions on the process, what you need to do, you know, how you need to go about it.
That, their semi-formal reassessment is supposed to be July 1st, is that when they're supposed to be set on that?
So-
What they think the actual assessment should be?
So, dates to appeal, 6/20 to August 1st.
6/20, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
That's, that's for the informal, right?
Formal.
The informal-
Informal, they're-
All right.
So informal is done, formal appeals start August 1st and run through the 31st. Tyler has handed over the files to the county, the county now possesses the file. Letters of the new assessment will be going out in the mail by June 20th.
Okay, so if you get your letter subsequent to June 20th, you have from-
There's gonna be a website on there to tell them where to apply, it's gonna tell them everything in the letter.
Okay.
And there'll be a website there to click into, our website, where they can apply to appeal for their formal hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Yep?
Hi, Michelle Tierney, Columbia Township. But I'm also here to welcome all of you, I am the Secretary of the Abington Heights Board of Education, and I welcome all of you, and I think the hot topic is reassessments. One of the responsibilities of governing the school district is levying taxes. So I am here to commend you for this daunting task, and as you see, there's still many questions, but to complete this reassessment is the most important thing that we can do as a community, to make sure that every municipality or school district has the proper formulas to levy their taxes and understand what the property values are and a balanced, a balanced figure and formula. So although it, there's obviously many questions, there's a lot of frustration, transparency, and meetings, and individual contacts is vital to make this process go forward, so I commend you for what you're doing. Please stay on course and help us districts and municipalities so we have the proper formulas to levy taxes the way we need to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Schirmack?
Well, I'm sure you'll talk about this too, but we have the Heritage Fair coming up this weekend, starting, starts Thursday, tomorrow?
Starts tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes, tomorrow, geez, tomorrow's Thursday already, so-
I would do the rest through Sunday.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully the weather cooperates and we have a good turnout, so if you have an opportunity, go down and visit the Heritage Fair at Montage Mountain. A couple other things that are going on, 10:00 a.m. at the Courthouse Square, the U.S. Army folks are gonna be raising the Army flag in celebration of the 250th birthday of the Army, so that'll be 10:00 a.m. at the Courthouse. And following that, at the Marine Corps League on East Mountain, we're gonna be having the ceremony where they retire the flags, the U.S. flags. So we have a Boy Scout troop that does it every year, so they go through the ceremony, and then they have where they burn the flags and take care of that. So that's an interesting thing, so if anybody has the opportunity, come up to the Marine Corps League and you can be there, that's 11 o'clock. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanna thank the Borough of Clark Summit for hosting us this morning, thank you very much for having us. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is gonna be held Wednesday, June 18th, at 10:00 a.m. in the Fifth Floor Boardroom at the Government Center, 123 Wyoming Avenue in Scranton. And I also just wanna acknowledge the passing of Paul Hart. Paul Hart passed away this past week, and Paul Hart was from Scranton and was one of the first members of the Railroad Authority, and a big, 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 big train enthusiast, so-
And one of my favorite teachers from Abington.
There you go, right, and a teacher at Abington Heights, and sad to see him go, and he really was the person who we wanna see on the train from Scranton to New York City, so we're sad to see him go. And the last thing I'll say is, I know, this is my own personal opinion, but illegal immigration was brought up today at this meeting, it's not the illegal immigrants we have to worry about, it's the racists, it's the bigots, and it's the homophobes. They're the ones we should be concerned about, not the illegal immigrants, they're not the problem. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, I believe Arts on Fire Festival is at the Iron Furnaces, right? What's that, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or just Saturday and Sunday? Saturday and Sunday down at the Iron Furnaces, Arts on Fire Festival.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.